Okay, we're live.
Great. Good evening, everyone. And I will officially call this Arcadia Unified School District Board of Education meeting to order at 7:01 PM. A roll call, everyone is here, all five board members plus all administrators. And we'll have the pledge of allegiance. Connor, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Japan, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The inspiration, Mrs. Chavez, I believe you have that tonight.
I do. Thank you, Madam President. So my inspiration tonight is derived from attending some sessions of professional development a few weeks ago. I attended a session at Highland Oaks, which was also done at Holly Avenue later in the day on introduction to identity with J.D. Fuller. And then another part of the session at First Avenue on recognizing biases with Dr. Alex June. Both sessions involved a deep dive into identity, how we see ourselves, how we see others, and how we believe others see us. And also the intrinsic biases that play a role in all of that. Both sessions pointed out that there's difficulty inherent in discussing race and identity. There's a fear to say the wrong thing, to do the wrong thing. And I just wanted to say thank you to all our teachers and all of our staff who kind of lived in their discomfort during those sessions. I appreciate everybody keeping an open mind. And for everybody who demonstrated their empathy during that, really demonstrating one of our core values. Both sessions touched on the importance of validating the authentic identity of others, you know, seeing and acknowledging differences. And the real importance of creating a sense of belonging and inclusion for people, whether they're our peers or our students. And so I have three quick quotes that I think sum this all up. The first is Maya Angelou. "I long, as every human being does, to be at home wherever I find myself." And I just feel like that speaks to Arcadia working to make our schools and our campuses a home for the folks that are there. "It's never too late to give up your prejudices," Henry David Thoreau. And last, "Strength lies in differences, not in similarities," Stephen Covey. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very timely and excellent comments. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'm going to approve the agenda.
Okay, so the motion was made by Mr. Eng and seconded by Mr. Chung. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any audience comments that have come in in the last few minutes?
Madam President, no, there are no public comments this evening.
Fabulous. Thank you very much. With that, Connor, it's time for the student rep report.
Good evening, everyone. As I say every week, my name is Connor Fawcett. I'm the student representative to the Board of Education. And tonight you will see a report of the ASB Executive Council delivered on behalf of Hannah Hung, the senior pep commissioner.
ASB is currently finalizing plans for the Halloween Teacher Tree event that will take place on Friday, October 30th, from 2:30 to 4:30 PM. Teacher Tree is ASB's substitute for the lack of trick-or-treating this year, where students will be allowed to drive through the HS parking lot and receive candy and small trinkets from teachers. This allows students and teachers to see each other and interact after a long hiatus in a safe way. The ASB historian is currently in collaboration with JoStins to manage Senior Week in Class Rings advertisement for the class of 2021. The ASB historian is also working on a video ad for Teacher Tree that will be featured in the virtual fall assembly. The publicity commissioner will be hosting ASB's virtual Halloween costume contest, where students can submit photos of their Halloween costumes. In a bracket-like tournament, students will vote on the ASB social media for their favorite costume. The winner will receive a $25 gift card courtesy of HS PTSA. Linkrew is currently working on their next freshman event, which is Halloween Bingo. This event is a fun way for the freshman class to have some fun competition, as well as get a chance to bond and connect with each other. The academic teams are transitioning out of hosting tryouts and into attending competitions. This past Saturday, Science Olympiad, Liz Bowl, and Math Team attended online competitions hosted over Zoom and Discord. The pep commissioners are currently working on the upcoming virtual fall assembly. This assembly includes a performance from Chantures, a game of charades played by each ASB council and various HS teachers, old pep squad performances, and a game of Among Us played by executive council members. In the absence of the traditional homecoming assembly in the fall, ASB hopes to use extra time from October's collaboration data to bring students together in a virtual fall assembly. Senior council hosted a successful school-wide pet day. Staff and teachers from across the district took to social media sharing pictures of their pets. A pet tournament was also held for anyone who wanted to participate. Senior council hopes to plan more virtual events throughout the school year to celebrate and bond the senior class. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any more that you have to add?
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Perfect. Okay. Action item 2A, agreement with PAC Pacific West Energy Solutions for building controls and lighting upgrades district-wide. Mr. Esalen, I believe you're going to cover this.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. And in just a moment, we'll have a presentation from Pacific West. And so I'd like to introduce Robert Cho, who's the president and founder of Pacific West, and also Coach Samuel, who's the executive vice president. And they probably have started to look a little familiar to everyone. They've done a few board presentations in the past. And that's because we've had some really successful projects with them. We've got a really good track record going. Starting back in 2013-14, we did some Prop 39 energy savings projects with them that included some air conditioning HVAC systems, as well as lighting on different campuses. We are currently waiting for final approval to get our battery storage system up and running. And these are just, you know, a couple examples of the successful partnership that we've had with Pacific West. And I think that that's due in part to the honesty that they approach our working relationship and that coupled with their win-win approach to the work that we do together. And I think the best evidence of that, concrete evidence of that approach, is that for this project and the battery storage project, they actually guarantee the savings that they're proposing in this agreement. And so that's really important to me in business services. And we know that it's what, it's good for the district. Another thing that you may be wondering is the timing of the request to approve this project. You may have forgotten, but tomorrow is actually the day that we are going out to sell our bonds, our Series C for the 2006, and also the refunding of the older bonds. And you may be wondering, why are we asking for approval of a contract when we don't even have the money in hand yet? And I just wanted to say that while I'm, you know, looking forward to everything going smoothly this evening with the approval of the contract and with the sale of the bonds tomorrow, and this will be our kickoff project for the Series C of the bond funds. Let's say something crazy happens tomorrow and we're not able to sell those bonds tomorrow. We still currently have sufficient cash on hand to cover the cost of this project. So we're confident that we can make this all work. And again, assuming everything will go very smoothly tomorrow with our bond sale. So with that introduction, I will turn it over to Coach and he can begin the presentation. Thank you.
Very well. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Let me pull up the presentation here. Hold on. It's, pardon me as I try to fiddle with this, trying to get the present now button to show up for me. I apologize. There it is. Okay, one second here. There you go.
Hey, Coach, while you're pulling that up, Derek, if you don't mind, I just wanted to add that when you were talking about the timing of that, a big variable in that was taking advantage of getting started while students and staff are not at school. So that was just another variable. The earlier we can get started on this work, the less impact to students learn, so.
Thank you for mentioning that. Yes.
Absolutely, absolutely. By the way, ladies and gentlemen, I just want to confirm that you can see the screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, first and foremost, thanks as always for allowing us to maintain this great partnership with all of you in the district. And it's been such a healthy and productive and mutually rewarding relationship. So we can't say enough how much we appreciate that. And by the way, it's been a little bit, I think it was what, December at Casbah, where I see a lot of familiar faces and a couple new ones. But it's always really good to see you and the entire board and Arcadia team. So again, I wanted to just say thank you for the opportunity to share what we're presenting to the board today as far as district energy efficiency improvements. And I will say, we didn't just come here by accident. It was a long, long road and it was a lot of analysis and due diligence. One thing, if you know about Derek and David Vong and their team, is they definitely put us through our paces and make us, make sure we exercise the project and make sure it's absolutely in the best interest. So we hope that what you find is indeed the case. So that being said, before I jump into it, I was going to share a couple things. One is, obviously, I'm sure you have some questions. Given it's a virtual format, it might be a little bit harder to see if you have them. If you're willing to wait until the end, we'd love to answer any questions you have. But just for sakes of expedience and efficiency, if you're willing to hold off, that'd be great. And second thing is, before I proceed, I was going to see if, Rob, if you had anything to share before we move forward?
Not at the present time, but good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Great to be in front of you today to present, as well as to thank you for the opportunity to be able to share about this project that we're putting before you.
All right. Well, thank you very much. And I'm going to proceed. So again, we're going to discuss some district energy efficiency improvements that we're excited to share with the district. What we're going to cover today is a few things, is to give you an understanding of what the key needs are remaining at the district. The district's been very diligent in accomplishing a lot of stuff, but there's still some needs left, and how we intend to accomplish them, what the resulting savings and benefits are, the timeline in order to implement them, what there is remaining. Like, I was very impressed with what the district is doing as far as being proactive. But there's always a remaining need. And then lastly, just do a summation and do some Q and A. So that being said, as far as key needs and opportunities, we wanted to just give you a quick before and after. Currently, as far as building controls, which is one of the major opportunities here, currently you have mostly analog and programmable devices, and it really allows you very little in terms of control. Secondly, from an operations and maintenance standpoint, it's very labor-intensive. Takes a lot of time and manual labor for the entire team to have to, the maintenance and facility staff, to have to keep those things up and running. And I will give, absolutely give the team a lot of credit because you guys do a great job. But still, taking, it takes time and effort and there's a resulting cost to that. As well, there's definitely a drift in terms of the programming, which ultimately leads to more cost. So that being said, what we're doing is, this is what, some examples of what we have, what you currently have on your campus, our campuses. And so what we're switching to is completely web-based, next-generation, expanded control capabilities. As well, a big thing that was very important to Derek and the team is to make sure that you are able to have a big picture view of everything that's going to be available to you in terms of programming and making sure it's tuned and optimized to what's in the best interest of the district. And as a result of those things, you're going to have a significant utility cost savings by being able to standardize and set parameters in terms of what that is. So you can see from the previous pretty antiquated stuff to what you're going to, it's literally next-generation, state-of-the-art equipment. So that's the, that's the first set of measures that we're implementing. Second, and Rob, do you have any commentary on that? So I think we captured that. Okay, let's keep moving. So then as well, you know, I know we've done a lot of work with the district in terms of lighting. So we're actually going to be implementing, there is still some remaining conversion from T8 fluorescence into state-of-the-art LED interior. But additionally, there is also a lot of exterior HID fixtures, old antiquated fixtures. And you can see those, some of these look pretty old. I think some of these are probably vintage 70s maybe. So we're going to improve those to updated lighting. And so you'll see, here's some simple examples of the type of technology that's going to be coming into place. It's going to be optimized for light levels. And one of the things that you'll see, and you'll see that, if you see that color box, there's, generally what we're seeing is not only does it look better and feel better, but it actually has a, there's a correlation to test scores. And reducing off-task behavior, and it actually improves achievement. Another thing from an O and M standpoint, operations and maintenance standpoint, is we're standardizing, which is great. And as well, there's significant savings as a result of switching to this newer technology. And lastly, it's enhanced. And so enhanced security, it's better, safer environments. So that's, that's functionally from a facility standpoint, again, this is a building, controls, and lighting project. But now, so from a facility standpoint, it's going to make for a better environment for your teachers and your students and your staff. But as well, it's going to have some significant potential impacts in terms of just the functional work environments and learning environments. But there's also a financial component to that. By implementing a program like this, you're going to see almost $290,000 of annual energy savings directly attributed to this project. And so that'll have a pretty significant effect, the effect in that, like we always talk about escalation, utility rates are not going down. Historically, they've been increasing 3% to 5%. In fact, in the last 10 years, it's been about 4.6%. Pretty significant. And so there is definitely is a cost for doing nothing. So I have to give the district a lot of credit in that Derek and the team, and Tony Barrios and everybody, have been very proactive and strategic, sort of identifying ways to avoid that cost, avoid that cost of doing nothing. So this, this project will result in about $288,000 in annual savings. And overall, over the term, through a fully turnkey, delivered approach, the district as a result will save about $5.4 million over the term, which is significant, which is great, great return on investment. So to give, that's a big picture view, but to just give you a little bit of breakdown of how that's comprised between the building controls and lighting and repairs and so on. Overall, it's going to save, like I mentioned, about 288 grand a year in annual savings, utility, hard cost utility savings, which like Derek had mentioned earlier, that is actually guaranteed by Pacific West. And so we're going to ensure the rubber meets the road on, for you, which is great. And so that, like I mentioned, it's going to be about roughly 5.3, 5.4 million in annual energy savings. But here's the key, that's on an investment of about $2.57 million. So essentially, by being strategic and being proactive and making, making the right decision with your funding, you're actually essentially getting 100% return on your investment over the term, which is significant. And just to give you some context, most energy projects don't return this big of an investment to you. But like I said, the district was very smart in what they decided to include in the project. So again, it's going to show you a pretty significant win there, of roughly 5.4 million. So that being said, just moving on, is timeline. So what's it going to take for this to actually happen? It's actually pretty, pretty consistent timeline. A couple of key things, like obviously with your blessing is we'll get the approval today. And we're going to be kicking off very quickly. And we're, and because we understand that you're going to be having on-campus learning starting in January. So our goal is to try to get as much work done between now and then as possible. So we wanted to be expedited. In fact, one of the things I'm actually proud to say is, we as a company, we have such a good relationship with your district that we decided, some of the longer lead time items, we decided to just, you know, go ahead and get in process such that we can try to affect as much as we can before that January timeline, specifically over the holiday periods, Thanksgiving, and during the holiday break, to really have a big chunk of work getting going. And even though I, like I mentioned, is we have a, based on this timeline, construction starts going to start late November. We're going to be looking at substantial completion by March 31st. But our intent is to have a large portion of that work completed by January. And then with ultimately a project sign-off by April 30th. So it's, like I said, we have a compressed timeline. There's a lot of work to do. But we in the district are committed to making it happen as much as we can to make it so, such that when students and teachers come back in January, it'll have minimal impact to, to the teaching and learning environments. Lastly, is, like we had mentioned, Derek, Tony, Jaime, the entire team has done a really good job of being proactive and identifying what are the right opportunities, what's the right use of monies, and how to be prudent fiscally with the district's resources. There are still definitely opportunities that remain. And there's a couple things here that we want to make sure we highlight. And air quality, as you know, is a big thing with, with districts nowadays. And so we have a recommended air quality approach that we've presented to the district and we want to talk through. And so with that, Rob, would you like to share a little bit about that? Highlight it for, for the, for the district, please?
Sure. Again, bear in mind, board members, that this slide really represents just additional opportunities. And the staff had asked us to just provide some, I guess, just some high-level information, high-level numbers about what, beyond this particular project, what there might be as far as forward months and years for the district. So these are roughly plus or minus probably 30, 40%. So just kind of bear with us as far as just, it's more of an illustrative type of chart here. But with regards to the air quality, again, this is something that Steph has already been looking into. And we're looking to potentially help out in terms of the research. But there are technologies that are available that can potentially make a pretty significant impact with the current pandemic. And as well as to increase air quality within the classrooms, improve class learning, as well as to also help with keeping ADAs up, as well as, you know, equity. I think that's becoming a much larger topic as far as providing good air quality, regardless of the type of facility, portable, permanent classrooms. And so I think those are some of the things to really keep in mind with regards to air quality. And so in the forward months, we're excited to be able to potentially share with the board, as well as the staff at the district, what some of those technologies and options might be.
Great. Thank you, Rob. And like Rob had mentioned, this is just a window. And so obviously, before we move forward with anything, is we were going to do really in-depth due diligence. And one thing I know about David and Derek is they're definitely going to make us work and really dig into the numbers and figure out what makes the most sense. So there, but there is some definite opportunity remaining, and it could have a significant impact to short and long-term financial impact on the district. But also in terms of developing an optimized district that's in the best interest of its students, faculty, and staff. So again, this is just a window onto that. So that being said, in summary, ultimately by implementing a project like this, you're going to have district-wide lighting and controls upgrades that are consistent and provides you the latest in technology, but also provides you the monitoring and control that you, that the district has so long, so longed for. Secondly, from a financial standpoint, again, it's going to have about a $5.4 million impact in energy savings in addition to the previous battery project that we did with your district. And again, we, it's a pretty quick construction window. So what that means to you is we're going to have, we're going to get this done quickly. You're going to be realizing savings very quickly. And it's going to be less, as little hassle and impact as possible to your teachers and students and faculty. And again, there are remaining opportunities that we're excited to share with you. But again, we're going to do that with the utmost due diligence and planning and being very conscientious about what's in the best interest of the district. So I know we've covered a long, I mean, a lot of information in a very short period of time. But before I dig into that or start a Q and A session, Rob, do you have any final, final parting comments?
I think I just wanted to, again, just thank the district. It's, it's been a tremendous relationship that we've enjoyed on our end. Thank you, Derek, for the kind words. We just really appreciate working with such a professional team, from Dr. Van Oostal, the board members, to the administrative staff, very top-notch and polished. And so we're excited to, again, be given the entrusted, this, the potential of working together again on yet another project, and that's a successful one at that. So thank you very much for that.
Absolutely. And I must agree with that. And Derek, would you like to share anything, any thoughts or comments?
Yes. Thank you, Coach, and thank you both for the presentation. Let me first just clarify a comment that Coach made about the district being back in January. That was not any revelation of a grand plan that we have in place. That was merely a point in time that we used as part of our planning and the conversation. You know, given, given what we know about COVID and how things are going, I think it's fair to say that we're not expecting to be back in the near future. And we thought possibly January might be the first time that we would have students back on campus in significant numbers. So I just wanted to clarify that that's not part of a district plan, but just part of the, the planning that we used for this project in terms of spacing out the timing. I did just want to reiterate some of the numbers, the savings that this project will earn the district. You see there on the, on the slide, it's about $288,000 per year in savings for the general fund. And that's, that's important because that is our ongoing operating budget. The project is, is costed out over 15 years. That's typically the useful life for the, you know, like for accounting purposes, the useful life of these, these, this equipment. But that doesn't mean on, you know, day one after 15 years that everything stops working. You know, with regular maintenance and care, we can get many more years beyond the 15 out of this equipment. And to put these savings in another perspective in a way that, that makes sense to me, it's about an eight-year payback period for the initial outlay of funds. And that's, you know, typically we look for less than 10 years. So an eight-year payback period is a pretty good time. Another way of thinking about it is the rate of return. If we were to take this money and invest it, if we left it in the county treasury, we'd earn somewhere around 2%. This project would earn us over an 11% rate of return for these funds. So that, those are really good numbers on the fiscal side. And so we feel really comfortable and confident with the financials of this project. With that, I'll turn it back to you, Ms. Kinsler. Thank you. Sorry, Kay, I think you're still muted. Kay.
Thank you. I'd like to get a motion before we start the discussion and ask questions. So could I have a motion?
All right. I approve, move to approve the agreement with Pacific West Energy Solutions for building controls and lighting upgrades district-wide.
I'll second.
Perfect. Okay, the motion made by Mrs. Chavez and seconded by Ms. Yi. Now let's go right into the questions.
Do you want to start, Raymond? I saw your hand.
You can go. Go ahead, Lee.
I just, two quick things. I, I was thinking back to like when we changed lighting, I think it was a J building at the high school, and how it was a revelation, I think, for both teachers and students to actually be able to see and have a workable environment with light. So changing over to LEDs and the brighter environment makes a lot of sense to me. What I wanted to hear more about was the standardization piece of that. Does that mean we're looking at the same type of fixtures district-wide, where the light bulb replacements would be the same? And thus, we would not have to carry like a massive inventory of different replacements?
I'll take that question on, excuse me, Ms. Chavez. That's a great question. As far as the inventory control goes, that's exactly it. That by being able to actually have the same type of of bulbs and drivers for these systems. It'll reduce the amount of stock that the district has to carry on hand. It'll also increase your buying power as far as in the future as you're replenishing those stocks. And you'll have really just a limited number of variation as far as the different systems right now. Currently, the 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 way that it is. You know, there there is just a lot of different types and variation right right now. And so it's it's really difficult for staff to really keep on top of all that. So that's that's definitely a benefit to having a standardized system across the board. It doesn't mean you have to standardize in terms of manufacturer, but at least the system itself will actually be compatible. So that the district will still be able to competitively bid that similar system, you know, for four years.
Thank you. And then I have one additional question. You know, we're talking about web-based controls. And we all know internet right now is such a big deal and availability of that. And when internet crashes, it's not a good thing, especially in virtual learning, but even in the day-to-day. Is that type of control gonna be putting a drain on our system? How does that work? Number one. And then two, we're talking about being able to program remotely and all that. Does that take away control of people actually in the buildings? Who are experiencing fluctuations and heat and cold, that kind of thing?
Those are some great questions as well. So as far as the the web control itself, it is not reliant on the internet as far as uploading and downloading a lot of data. So if the if the question is, is it gonna affect our Schoology or Zoom or whatever platforms at the school level? It's not going to to do that. Really, it's just standardization as far as communication. And it's very minimal traffic that's going up and down through the server. It's also very secure. I think your IT staff will be very happy with the way that they actually do the the architecture itself. As far as your second question about control, I know that obviously, you know, performance learning, especially with staff members too, is also very important. The ability to provide control. So again, that's something that we'll be working out together with district staff. And figuring out what the right settings are. But essentially, what allow the administrative staff to do is to be able to really broadcast. You know, standardized set points and schedules and what have you. But there is the ability to actually have individualized control. Say that some folks need a few degrees up or down extend, you know, folks are working a little bit later that day, they can actually definitely bypass that. So that 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 capability is there. And by the way, you did bring up a good point, too. Internet sometimes goes down. The nice thing about this is there is a fail-safe that if internet is is down for a prolonged period of time. The thermostat will unlock so that individual occupants can, in fact, you know, operate the systems as they need to during those emergency times.
More questions?
Yeah. First, I really liked the project, eight, nine-year payback or even period. It is awesome. You don't see that very much. In terms of infrastructure investments, so that's great. I had a question about how the guaranteed savings work. So how is that being calculated? Is there a baseline, you know, year that we're basing that off of? And is that for the full fifteen year plan?
It's a great question. So probably the easiest way to tackle that question is, you know, what's what type of protocol do we use? It's called the IPMVP, the International Protocol for Measurement Verification. And so what that, there is actually, that was actually in concert with the federal government many years ago. And so there's a standardized approach to looking at lighting systems or building controls or pretty much any type of system out there. And so there are these prescribed set of ways to be able to measure the energy savings. Just to give you an example, let's say that we change out a light bulb. The idea is that we can put on a power meter actually at the light switch of a particular classroom. So we can measure the before wattage. And then after the change out, we'll actually measure the after wattage. And thereby being able to quickly deduce, you know, what that savings level is for those particular projects. So again, the same thing will be done on the the control side as well. And so then what we'll typically do is we'll have a sampling plan within the contract already put in place. After the before the project is installed, our team will go out there and actually do the before measurements. And then after the project's completed, we'll do the after measurements and then we provide a report with all the real actual measurements before and after for the district for their review.
Okay, so but if, let's say, energy costs triple and we don't see any savings at all, how how is that calculated?
Oh, I see. Okay. For for a lot of these projects, we typically have to designate a baseline, which ultimately speaking is roughly about twelve months prior to the last twelve months prior to engaging in this contract. And so what we'll do is we will use that energy rate and apply that to the saved energy a- as far as developing a cost savings. Now bear in mind, if that's a great question. If costs do increase by threefold. Then what what you're gonna be looking at is probably a threefold actually savings. So the way to look at it is an avoided cost. Yes, the overall bill may increase, but as far as if you didn't do the project. That in turn would also triple i- in terms of your your usage. And so I I think that's hopefully that's that's clear as far as how we go about reducing the the cost savings.
Yes, thank you.
If I may add one piece of color commentary, Mr. Chung, is when we do to our calcs, we also factor in escalation on historical energy as utility rates raise. So that definitely we do factor in a a historical record of what the rates are. So that gives us a model based against for rate increases.
Thank you. And Derek, I have a question for you. Could you talk a little bit more about how we're able to have this contract solely with Pacific West? You know, basically the how and the why we're choosing them and what's so special about it and why it's important?
Sure, absolutely. So I think as we emerged from the the recession. The state of California modified the government code that allowed school districts in in our case to be able to enter into these energy service contracts. And so they're specifically designed around energy savings projects. And this was at the time when Prop thirty-nine was passed, which is when we began work with Pacific West. And so the idea here is that we can contract directly with an outside organization. And we do have to meet certain requirements to be able to sign an agreement of this type. First of all, the the government code states that we have to approve the contract at a regularly scheduled meeting, which is what we're doing this evening. We have to give public notice at least two weeks in advance that we're going to be bringing this contract forward under this specific government code, which we did do. We posted that publicly, I think it was three weeks ago. And and then lastly, it's about savings. You know, we have to be able to show that the anticipated cost. The outlay of this project is less than the savings that we anticipate to earn over the life of this project. And so and I and I think we've shown that the numbers clearly reflect that fact that, you know, entering into this agreement and undertaking these modifications will financially benefit the district.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My question is, I know it'll be different for the lighting versus the HVAC, but on about how many classrooms are or what percentage of our classrooms are is this really gonna affect? Because in some cases like the J building, we've just done lighting upgrades, so you won't be touching those. But just so I have an idea of the the scope.
I apologize. I don't have the the num- specific or the exact numbers in front of me right now. But if you recall with Prop thirty-nine monies, we took care of the majority of the elementary school facilities, at least in the interior classrooms. And so if I may, I I think at a high level. We're gonna be doing a little bit of cleanup work at the elementaries in terms of there are certain areas that weren't touched by the Prop thirty-nine program. So a couple minor areas at the elementary level. Again, I think Coach had mentioned that we're gonna be touching the majority of the exterior lighting at all elementary, middle and high school. The middle schools were not affected by the Prop thirty-nine project. And so, you know, all the middle school interiors are going to be done by this program. And then lastly, at the high school, obviously, there's been a combination, obviously, the J building was an overwhelming success. As well as there's certain areas in the high school that have been modernized. And so we're not going to be touching those areas of it for obvious reasons. But there are, I would say that more than likely about fifty percent of the high schools still have that remaining lighting we need. So that's really what's being captured by this particular project.
Very good. And I'm assuming then that HVAC, because like our new buildings should already have newer HVAC control system on it. So it's really just the old class thing that the high school, middle school and elementary schools.
So with regards to the HVAC controls. There might be different vintages all over the place. It's kind of similar to the lights where there's a lot of variety. And it makes it really difficult for the HVAC staff to maintain and operate. And so the idea is to actually standardize across the board. The only facility that we will not be touching is the AEC building, which staff has already been working towards actually putting it on a a better centralized control system. So everything aside from the AEC building will be getting that web-based control and so that you have a standardized platform to be able to to do the control work. So with that being the case, I would say the majority of the controls are are actually pretty antiquated. And so the good news is that we're not gonna be replacing state-of-the-art type equipment. We're we're leaving the district office by itself.
And if I could just add on to that, I think also the the new building at the maintenance yard, that's already at a sufficient level because it was so recently built. And the district office, we've decided to go with a different system to actually provide a little bit more detailed control based on different areas of the building. It's it's one of the few locations on a district-wide that where we felt like we really needed that more specific control. And just to give you an example, at the high school, the administration building. Over the years since it's been built, our maintenance department has actually taken out these building controls just because they did not work very well. And so that's an example of where we had to revert back to, you know, just the the buttons on the wall system. And so we'll be upgrading that building with this system so that we'll be able to have better control of that along with all the other buildings.
So the HVAC is very in-depth. It's it's affecting everything except for the AEC and the maintenance yard.
Yes. And and to be clear, Kay, it's it's about the 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 controls on the wall, not the actual HVAC units themselves. I mean, we're we're regularly updating those, you know, every year as they become, as they age out. But this is specifically about the controls so that we know when they turn on in the morning, we know when they turn off at night. We don't have units that are running all weekend long with nobody there. That's where we're gonna earn a lot of savings is by being able to have that control over that downtime when nothing should be on.
Derek, when you say that, does that mean we'd be able to like look at a computer screen and see what's on, what's off from afar?
Exactly. And we also have the ability, if there's a surprise, you you know, event at the district office or at the high school where we need to turn something back on. That we have the ability to go in through an app or through a webpage to turn that portion of that campus back on or the portion of that building. So it 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 gives us a quicker response time if needed. But it's really balancing that control that we want district-wide in the maintenance department with that the personal control of the people that are sitting there. And they will have some ability to adjust the temperature, but we also, as a department, will be able to react more quickly to their requests for systematic adjustments.
Well, Derek, I I had just a quick question. I think all my questions have been answered for this particular project. So thank you, Coach, and for Robert, for all your extensive, you know, answers. But I was actually curious about the air quality portion that there that they will be putting together, I'm assuming some sort of proposal. Is there a timeline for that, especially with, you know, obviously, we're gonna be going to classrooms, we want that air quality to be good? So my question is, is there a timeline for that?
I'm 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 pleased to hear you asking about that because we've we've definitely been having a lot of conversations around this this project lately. And on on top of the the concern about COVID and viruses and flu season coming. Which will be an ongoing concern as we move into the future, you know, even once COVID has passed. But also the 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 fires, the Bobcat fire really impacted the air quality within our buildings. We're actually required to bring in outside air into our HVAC systems. And so that really impacted the air quality in our buildings when the fire was so bad. And so I I would say that, and what we're talking about more specifically at this point, surely are these ionization units? And I don't, I don't know that I can speak very fluently about the science behind it. Rob, maybe you can jump in and just give them a brief overview?
Sure. Ionization technology has been around for many, many decades. I think maybe some of us might remember them in the sharper image kind of model of the air filter. And there's a lot of problems with those systems because they create ozone. And come to find out that breathing almost kind of like aerosolized bleach is not really healthy for us. So there there have been advances in that technology. But the the basic premise is with ionization, they create these positive and negatively charged ions into not only their air conditioning system, but actually also within the classroom or the office area. And it's it's similar to being next to like running water, like a waterfall, maybe a river, the ocean. And those areas or environments have a lot of these positively neglected charged ions. What they do is they essentially stick to all the the nasty things in the air, whether it's, you know, whether it's viruses, mold, spores, smoke, particulate matter, VOCs from carpets and paint, you name it. So it sticks it all together. It drops either onto the floor or it actually gets scooped up into the air conditioning unit. And because these particles are much larger. Their filters do a much nicer job of being able to to take those things out of the air. So in a nutshell, that's kind of what how the ionization technology works. And so that's one of the the key technologies we're looking at potentially to recommend to the district to use.
Thanks, Rob. And and just to finish that thought, Shirley. You know, there's been a lot of conversation about improving air filters, you know, the quality of the air filters. And some of our older HVAC units, it it would be detrimental to their performance to install these more aggressive filters. And so our thought is, in the meantime, to install these ionization units, maintain the appropriate level of filter. And then, of course, as time goes on, as the years pass by and we start to, again, phase out these older units and replace them with newer units. They'll be able to handle those stronger filters and and then maybe we don't need these ionization units. But at least in the meantime, this is a quicker and less expensive option to get to improve the air quality in all of our classrooms. So I'd like to say a timeline, I would, I I can't promise you this, but I would love to have this up and running and and hopefully done. You know, by early twenty twenty-one, but we're still working through the details.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and vote the motion. On the motion to approve the agreement with The motion, on the motion to approve the agreement with Pacific West Energy Solutions for the building controls and lighting upgrades district-wide, motion was made by Mrs. Chavez and seconded by Mrs. Yi. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, we'll move on to the resolution number fourteen oh, fourteen eighteen, authorization to assign elementary and secondary teachers to teach subjects not listing on their teaching credentials under the board resolution during the 2020, 2021 school year and during 2021 summer school. Dr. Hirschew.
Great. Thank you, Madam President. So this is an annual item that the district utilizes to ensure that all of our teaching staff are credentialed appropriately. As you are aware, California statutes allow for board authorization under limited circumstances and lets the teaching credential holder serve in a single subject class if the teacher has met education units in that particular subject. The district uses education code, teacher consent, and the board resolution to assign teachers within compliance standards for teaching assignments. Tonight, this will happen in a two-step process. First is the approval of this resolution. And second will be through the approval of the consent personnel, personnel action report, which lists the teachers who fall within these compliance standards. So with that said, we recommend for approval, resolution number fourteen eighteen.
Very good. Um, can I have a motion before we start discussion on this?
I'll move to approve resolution number fourteen eighteen.
I'll second.
Okay. Are there questions about this? It seems like everybody-
Really quick, Dr. Hirsch, I know you just said, you know, what we use, teacher agreement, ed code and all that. But I think to a layperson listening to this, I mean, so you hear so many complaints about districts putting people who are not qualified to teach a subject into a subject. Can you just elaborate a little bit more about why that doesn't apply here?
Oh, sure. All of these teachers are in fact appropriately credentialed for these subject matters under these authorizations. Specifically, um, uh, for our teachers this year, this all falls under either health or, or physical education requirements. And in small districts, these are really important statutes for us to utilize. Because as student master schedules changes from year to year, you may have a cer-, uh, you know, an extra PE class that needs to be taught in any given year. And this helps prevent us having to go through a reduction in force to do so. And so we utilize these to be able to maintain all of our current staff and to meet the needs, the educational needs of our students.
And I, I think it's also good to note that when you look at the list, it's a very small list of teachers that we are doing this with. Other districts have huge lists and this is very reasonable.
Agreed.
Okay, um, the motion to approve resolution fourteen eighteen was made by Mr. Chung and seconded by Mrs. Yi. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and next is the res-, um, the public notice of waiver of credential requirements.
Great, thank you. So here in this public notice, the teacher, uh, the, excuse me, the commission on teacher credentialing lets the districts apply to waive the state's requirement for providing services to English learners. And in this instance, the district will apply on one teacher's behalf to waive the English learner authorization while she's completing her EL coursework. Uh, and upon receipt of this waiver, this teacher will be considered compliant for all auditing purposes as carried out by the state and the commission. And last, I would just like to acknowledge the great work of our HR credentials analyst, Stephanie Paz, who works really hard to ensure our compliance on all matters related to certified credentials. You know, we, we just want to hire the best person for each position. And sometimes people have a little bit more coursework to complete as they begin to embark on their teaching journey with us. So this is not unusual for us as well.
Before I ask for discussion, let's have a motion on this.
I move to approve waiver of credential requirements for the following certificated candidate, Emily Roswell.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, with that, we have the motion to approve the waiver of credential requirements. And the motion was made by Mr. Eng and seconded by Ms. Chavez. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. With that, there, we have no items removed from consent agenda, so we're to the Williams settlement as an information item. Dr. Forsey.
Yes, Madam President, thank you. I am happy to report that we have no Williams settlement complaints.
Thank you very much, Dr. Forsey. COVID nineteen department updates. Dr. Vanasdaw.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. Just as a reminder, we started these department reports back with our first board meeting following the pandemic and especially our safer-at-home move back that started March thirteenth with the closure, the physical closure of our facilities. And just to recognize that, first of all, so many of our traditional means of communication, being together in so many different formats and being able to share information is not what it used to be. And secondly, recognizing that things are moving rapidly. So the amount of information coming down from the state, information then being interpreted by the county and then the, the local control that we have after that, just things are moving quickly. There's a lot of information to get out. And so this is our opportunity to kind of do a three sixty. So I did want to start this evening by, um, speaking on some realistic expectations of returning to school physically for our students. Because I just continue to, from a parent's perspective, understand how confusing a lot of this information is, especially people have friends or family that are scattered across California and even locally, you may not drive very far, but you find yourself in another county. And it's really important to understand that each county right now, first of all, is experiencing significantly different impacts from COVID nineteen, from the number of hospitalizations, the number of cases per, you know, per percentage of the population. And so we have to continue to speak about Los Angeles. That is the county that we operate in, and it's very specific. An example is, you know, Orange County has, has been in a very low tier on the, on the governor's tiers of, of, you know, how far, how many cases that you have and how serious the restrictions have to be. And so Los Angeles has been, Los Angeles County has been at the top tier, the purple tier it is since, since we started this, uh, system. And so I just want to be clear that when people hear about their friends and their family and other, other counties, it's going to look very different as, as restrictions start to be limited or, or increase, depending on the county that you live in. So let me talk about LA County and where we are specifically now. Right now, according to our health department, and I'll say according to our health department right now, because things could change. But we are being told that based on the super, but the board of supervisors' decisions and how they're interpreting the governor's new system, is that we have to be trending down in multiple variables from hospitalizations to COE, the number of cases, et cetera. We have to be trending down for two weeks and actually hit the threshold of the lower tier. So we're in purple, there's a red tier. We have to hit that for two weeks before the county can move to the next lowest tier, which is the red tier. Once we hit the red tier, now this is for schools only, doesn't necessarily mean restaurants, businesses, then we have to maintain that status, again, with the numbers staying equal or going down, trending down, for another two weeks. So at the point that we're actually trending in a good direction, down on those numbers, it's going to be four weeks, a minimum of a month of that trend before the county will even begin to accept waivers. And again, that's very confusing because a lot of people have heard, well, the LA County's accepting waivers TK two to be able to return to school. And that's true, they're accepting the waivers, but they won't even look at them for approval for at least four weeks after we start that positive trending. Now, there's a couple more variables that come into play now at the local level. One of them, again, it's in LA only, so it's very confusing. But LA County has interpreted the governor's restrictions that we have to get written approval from our union groups. Again, approval, not just consult with them, but approval. And when I say that, that's not from, coming from the local union organizations that we work with locally at, at our sites and in our district. That's from the statewide organizations. And at this time, they haven't been willing to sign those. So that's another hurdle that we're looking at in LA. Another one for, that's specific to Arcadia is that once we, once LA begins to accept applications for that waiver, and again, we're talking elementary TK two only, they're only going to approve thirty per week. And that's thirty schools, not thirty districts. We're in a huge, you know, LA County's massive with, you know, hundreds of schools. So they're going to prioritize those, those schools based on free and reduced lunches. So the, the schools with the higher free and reduced lunch rates will get priority over others. We're currently about seventy-eight out of eighty-five school districts on that prioritization list. That's from, at the low end. So, uh, it's just, I, I just want to really be clear and set that realistic expectation that although we all want to be hopeful and people are hearing some good trends, we still have a lot of hurdles to get over before we would even begin to be able to plan. And what does that plan look like? Well, as we go down in tiers, the restrictions change and the protocols will be changing. Each time, they'll be regrouping the health department and be deciding what the new protocols will be. So, you know, to be able to share now, here's the plan for when we are allowed to come back, the plan's going to look very different then, because the restrictions and the requirements, the protocols will be very different. So, so that's just, you know, I, I, I keep telling people that, you know, safety and health is the most important and it, and it is. I also recognize that this is really difficult on all of our families, our parents, you know, our staff that are, are doing this very new teaching for the first time. And so I recognize the, how, how difficult this is and at the same time, want to be realistic in that we are going to be in this virtual environment for a while. And we have, will be giving these updates and when we know something, of course, we will be sharing it. But it's going to, we're going to be in this virtual environment for a while. And, and I think that's why we're beginning to see in a very positive way that our staff, our, our teachers, everyone's, you know, just iterating and continuing to find those best strategies in this virtual environment. And, and as we join classes and meet with principals and teachers, you know, teaching and learning is happening. And I couldn't be more proud of our staff and our community. Everyone's stepping up, bringing their very best every day. And that's what it's going to take. And so we recognize that the virtual environment is not what it is when we're back in school and with those wraparound services and, and being able to be face-to-face. But with this environment and ensuring that we are safe and that we are doing our part, this is, I, I believe that our staff, our community, and our parents are stepping up and doing the very best. So with that, I am going to start off with Derek Gussel and our superintendent for business services. Derek, if you'll give us some updates.
Yes, thank you. Uh, I'd like to talk this evening about proposition fifteen, which is the split role initiative. And then also a little bit of an update on the economy at the state level. And I had talked about proposition fifteen a few board meetings ago. But at that time, I had said, you know, it, it's not looking likely that it's going to pass. Well, I guess the, the polling has changed and it, there seems to now definitely be a possibility that, or I should say proposition has a possibility of passing. So I just wanted to revisit it. It came up in our conversation this morning in one of our meetings. So the proposition fifteen is, is called the split role and it, it, it goes back to Prop thirteen from the seventies. And it would basically require commercial and industrial properties to be taxed based on their market value rather than the purchase price. There are some exemptions built in businesses that have California property valued at less than three million dollars are exempt from this. Farmland is also exempt. I also learned that this is actually, would, would be phased in over time. So it would delay the reassessment of these properties. It would begin in twenty-two, twenty-three and continue through twenty-five, twenty-six. So we're still a few years out, if this were to pass, to see any of the impact. In terms of revenue coming in, they estimate anywhere from six and a half to eleven and a half billion dollars statewide. Of that total, fourteen percent of it goes to education, and that's K fourteen education, so that includes community colleges. The remaining sixty percent goes to cities and counties. The money for education gets allocated based on our student population, both total attendance as well as our proportion of unduplicated pupils. Right now, the estimate that we have for Arcadia Unified would be somewhere between three point one and five and a half million dollars. Now, built into all of these estimates, or I should say not built into these estimates, is any potential loss of tax base. One of the things that we learned after the fact, years ago, when the state extended the temporary tax on the highest income earners, what we saw there was a significant percentage of that income left the state. And we did not receive the total amount that we had originally anticipated on a statewide basis. So whether we may experience any sort of tax loss based on Prop fifteen passing, we don't know. But it's not factored into these estimates. When I looked today at the polling, I saw a lot of different numbers. Support for Prop fifteen varied anywhere from forty-nine to fifty-one percent, so about half the people support. Opposition was anywhere from thirty-four to forty percent. And the undecided ranged from nine to seventeen percent. So it's still a lot of opportunity for things to change over the next month. Moving on, speaking of new revenues or not new, new revenues, I think we, we know by now at the federal level that we won't, we're not expecting any new federal stimulus money for California and for education. And so what that means is that the budget, the state budget that was adopted and went into effect on July one is, is what we're expecting to live with for the rest of this school year. That statewide budget had eleven billion dollars in cuts. And, and we are experiencing our share of that. And so as we move forward and we start to look already in October, look forward to the, what, the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Just recently, the UCLA School of Business published their economic update. It was as of September thirtieth, so just a couple of weeks old at this point. What they started with was that the cash receipts for the state of California in the current fiscal year, just for July and August so far, is actually exceeding the budgeted revenues by four and a half billion dollars. That's about ten percent of total revenue. So that's really good. I mean, it's only two months, but at least we can say so far, we started the year strong. And that bodes well. At least we're going to meet our, our budgeted revenues statewide. And hopefully that may carry into the following year. One of their key assumptions, the, the economists at UCLA, was that COVID nineteen would start to loosen its grip on our economy. I think that's a big if, but well, you know, just keep in mind that there are assumptions. That's one of their key assumptions. GDP or gross domestic product, they're expecting it to be down about four percent for the 2020 calendar year. But for the two following calendar years, they expect it to increase three and a half and four percent. But for the two following calendar years, they expect it to increase three and a half and four percent respectively, so that, that's encouraging. Unemployment, uh, again, by end of twenty-twenty is about, uh, almost eight percent is their projection. And they see that declining over the next couple of years, so again, good news. And even currently, uh, we see good news in the housing market. Uh, home sales for the twenty-twenty calendar year have already exceeded. Uh, those for all of twenty-nineteen. And I think we know with the really low interest rates that that's spurring a lot of those home sales and refinancing. Uh, it's the same reason that, uh, we're seeing such a good market for our bond sale for the district. Uh, and so without any expected federal stimulus. Um, one of the projections that I saw for the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year for California is an eight point seven billion dollar deficit. Uh, I'm sure that number will change, but, um, you know, that's a significant amount. Um, it's a significant number, not as great as what we experienced this year though. Now California actually cannot go into debt. It's not like the federal government that can print money. It, it does have to have a balanced budget. And so we don't know what that's going to look like, um, at this point, the twenty-one, twenty-two, uh, school year is, is very much an unknown. Um, and we will, you know, keep our eye on the market and the economy and, uh, by mid-January, we'll have the governor's proposal. For the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Uh, and that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay, any questions for Derek?
The, the forecast that's saying that UCLA has done where they're thinking COVID is loose, will loosen its grip. At what timing are they thinking that in, in their analysis that they use?
Uh, I think it would probably within the next three to six months time span. They weren't real specific on that, but you know, because their, their estimates, their projections. You know, they're either through the end of twenty-twenty calendar year and then they look at several years out. So it's, uh, my, you know, my, my assumption is that it's between those, those two windows.
Okay, because at this point with the COVID numbers increasing, the number of infections increasing. Um, across the United States, not only in California and LA County, that's. I don't see that loosening up. I don't see the COVID loosening its grip on us anytime soon. And with the state of innoc- or the, the possibility of, uh, vaccines. It, it'll be a tough one. Okay.
Yeah, and I'll just, I'll add that, um, you know, economists typically tend to be pretty conservative. So, you know, what, what they, how they define, you know, COVID, you know, going away, you know, may, may be different than. Then what we're, how we're how, you know, figuring that, so. You know, maybe that has a lot of conservativeness built in it already, but, well, you know, we'll just have to wait and see and I'll provide the updates as they come along.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we'll move on. Next we have our Assistant Superintendent for Human Resource Services, Dr. Hrishu.
Great, thank you, David. Uh, so tonight I'll be reporting on special education, health services and, and human resource services. Uh, beginning with, uh, a report from Dr. Catherine Mahoney of special education. In-person student assessments began last week and Dr. Mahoney wishes to thank the special education staff. Health services and MOT who put hours into preparing for these to be done safely and in alignment with. The LA County Department of Public Health guidelines. In addition, the assessment group, uh, continues to meet weekly to develop best practices for initial assessments, uh, for special education students. The department continues to collaborate with the fourteen directors from our SELPA partner districts on a weekly basis. To align practices and to understand the variations of distance and in-person learning happening across the SELPA. And then, uh, as part of our supporting inclusive practices grant, ten coaches, program specialists and administrators. Are participating for free in a multi-session online course. Uh, it's titled Equity by Design by Katie Novak and Miro, uh, Chartin. And this course teaches educators how to utilize UDL principles to support equity in schools. Moving on to health services, uh, from Nurse Erica Newkirk. Health services has been working, uh, with Kinza, a medical company that is going to provide free thermometers to all students and staff. Uh, students and staff will have the option of downloading the Kinza companion app if they so choose. Or they can simply use the device as a standalone thermometer. Principals will oversee the distribution at the site level, which will include a letter from AUSD. Explaining the thermometers and that participation in the app is completely optional. District nurses are once again providing distance, uh, tuberculosis risk assessment screenings for employees as required by law. And we will be reaching out to employees over the next two to three weeks in order to, uh, conduct these screenings. The department has created a presentation for all staff in order to explain the current COVID nineteen pandemic. And describe individual and AUSD safety measures. Uh, it went live last week and, uh, a number of staff have already viewed it. Health services has completed and distributed virtual information packets to families of students. Who require specialized physical healthcare services while at school. These packets include information on accessing medical care during the COVID nineteen pandemic. Recommended conversations to have with their child's hair, healthcare provider and suggested next steps for students with complex medical conditions. And last, health services continues to serve as a liaison between AUSD and the, uh, LA, uh, County Department of Public Health. Moving on to HR, uh, as Mrs. Chavez so eloquently acknowledged in her inspiration. Uh, the district is embarking on various professional development and training on the topic of diversity, equity and bias. And admin council is no exception. Last month, the group began its year-long training and I personally want to thank the team members who have joined me in the planning. Uh, Catherine Morel, Dr. Alicia Seves, Dr. Bavini Vodka, Dr. Samin Issa and Dr. Andrea Mendoza. And this concludes my report.
All right, thank you, Dr. Hrishu. Any questions? All right, moving on. Next we'll have Assistant Superintendent for Educational Services, Dr. Brent Forsey.
Good evening. Um, I will be giving, uh, approximately seven updates tonight for you. The initial, uh, LPAC in-person testing is completed and again, the LPAC is for English learners, uh, new to our district. A few remote tests will take place in the next few weeks for students that were unable to come in, uh, for their assessments. The advancement grant awarded by the county, uh, will be dedicated to providing mobile arts technology stations for traveling music teachers. At the six elementary sites and developing a website dedicated to the comprehensive visual and performing arts program. In the Arcadia Unified School District. The district will be matching the funds we got from the county, um, and that will total a little over twenty-three thousand dollars. The Ed Services Team, uh, will begin this week writing the CESE, the CESE plan. Which stands for Comprehensive Coordinated Early Intervention Services Plan. Based on the analysis and feedback received from the significantly disproportionate stakeholder meetings. Um, and thank you, Lee Chavez, for being a part of that, uh, with us. HS will be providing, uh, sexual harassment and misconduct educational trainings for students, staff and parents. The goal of this training is to bring awareness to important safety topic, topics impacting teens and our community. Including sexting, healthy relationships, dangers of social media and more. This will include two evening meetings with parents, the, the same content, two days to meet, um, parent schedules who may have different work schedules. Uh, two training sessions with staff and a training for each grade level for students. The elementary student-led conferences were completed last week for each student and family. Teachers did an outstanding job of communicating areas of strength and growth for students. As someone with personal experience as a parent with two elementary students. Teachers did an outstanding job of bridging the educational experience for families, even in this, in, uh, virtual environment. Where families can't physically go to school. The instructional coach team each weekly to collaborate on continued professional development opportunities they can offer and to problem solve. How they can continue to support specific sites in specific areas. As a reminder, we strategically decided to assign coaches away from the AC and directly to sites during the time of distance learning. This way, teachers have a direct link to help when they need it. The principal team continues to collaborate by level and as an entire team to serve their communities as we transition seasons of our school year. They continue to go above and beyond to connect students and families and are even now in the process of planning, uh, holiday events that again. Are in, uh, alignment with the county health requirements. And that is all for my updates tonight.
All right, any questions for Dr. Forsey? All right, thank you. Next we'll have our Chief Strategy and Innovation Officer, Greg Gazanian.
Thank you, David. Uh, just a few things for tonight. Uh, you know, I, I think in my updates I tend to go from like broad to narrow to broad. So I'm going to maybe do a little bit of a mix tonight. Uh, as, uh, Derek was doing the presentation. Um, on just everything going on in, in business services and facilities right now, I'm reminded of the theme that David set for us. Not too long ago, which is to look for the opportunities in the midst of everything that is going on. Uh, there's a lot going on and it's very difficult. There is no, don't deny in that, but. In every department and every school in our district, we're seeing people finding opportunities and finding those bright spots, so. You know, first congratulations to, to Derek and his team about that. I love the point that between pandemic and fires. Uh, we found the opportunity to look at our air quality and what that might look like. And that's just one example of, uh, what's going on in our district. So as far as the specifics, um, you know, we're continuing our grant process. Uh, I know I talked a lot about that last time, so I just want to share. Instead of a high-level view this week, uh, just something more specific of an example of, uh, something I heard about. I talked with a teacher about a grant they were looking for and just ways that we can support them. And at the end of the conversation, uh, and I won't share their names just because I, I didn't ask, that'd be all right for tonight, but, um. This is the end of the conversation, they said, oh, by the way, uh, you know. You know, I'm, uh, I'm streaming live my class this week from a mock formation in the desert because that's what we're studying about and it's opportunity for kids to see. Kind of what we're talking about in person and I was just blown away by this. Again, this, this wasn't the grant, this is just an aside. And it dawned on me that this was an opportunity these kids would not have, uh, if we were just in school. If they were in their desk and the teacher was in front of the classroom or walking around, they wouldn't be seeing a live stream from this beautiful formation in the middle of the desert. Uh, and again, it just was a reminder to me that even in the midst of the challenges that we're facing right now, there are some beautiful opportunities. So I also want to note that because it's a, a tipping point in some of our research that we're doing in strategy and innovation right now. We're also doing a lot to support folks right now as far as grants, but we're also starting to listen and learn. Of what are maybe some opportunities we can cherry forward even once we are back. And again, we don't know when that's going to be. Uh, it seems like it's a long ways out, but when we come back, what have we learned, what opportunities have we found? And how can we as a district continue to be better even when things go back to perhaps much more similar to the way they were moving forward? So again, huge opportunities out there and just thank you to all of our staff and all of the departments and schools for finding those opportunities. In terms of research, uh, we are engaging with our partners, uh, research partners, find out what is going on in the world. Uh, in regard to COVID and schools reopening. Again, there's a lot of variation out there. We're, we're a ways off, as David mentioned. But that doesn't mean we can't learn from what's going on at other schools and districts where they are starting to engage around different modes of students being back. Uh, so we're expecting some, uh, reports to come back soon that we'll be going over as a team. And again, we are integrating what we learned into a mental model that we can use as we start to explore opportunities as, uh, those options become available to us. Um, you know, we're also, uh, getting ready to start getting with our Better Together data, uh, with our partners at UCSD. Uh, we're getting ready to dive back in. I just want to take a moment to congratulate, uh, and thank again, uh, Daniel Hackey. Uh, who's been leading up that effort, Andre Mendoza, who's been assisting with that and all of our principals who have helped facilitate that. Uh, and obviously all the staff and students and parents and, uh, folks in the community who have taken those, uh, surveys. It's really good data for us. Uh, it helps us know where we're at in a time where we are spread out in a lot of ways and not in person. How are we doing, uh, doing in terms of culture and how are people, uh, feeling and perceiving our organization? So again, we're just getting ready to, uh, ignite that again. Uh, and we'll certainly keep you in the loop, but again, thanks to the team that's working so hard around that. Uh, also, uh, finally I'll just say, uh, in terms of our partnerships and, uh, just like we are learning from other people, we want to be able to share what we are learning with others. And we've gotten some interest from outside organizations in our grant process that we've been utilizing throughout our district. So we're continuing to chat with people and share what we know. Uh, collaboration is one of our values and we're doing our best both to, uh, engage in learning and in sharing. So a lot going on, um, but that is it for me for today's tonight. Happy to answer any questions if you want.
All right, hearing none. Thank you, Greg. And next up, our Chief Communications Officer, Ryan Varan.
Good evening, everyone. Great to be with you. So we're almost about due for another coronavirus update. We're kind of transitioned to about a thirty days or so cycle with. Updates from the district and, um, I think our next update will sound very similar to what Dr. Van Oostal. Shared today, which was just a great kind of picture of where we're at and in comparison to other districts and. Probably start to get those questions if, you know, I'm hearing my cousins, friend, neighbor's schools are opening where they live. You know, what about us and, um, where are we at with all that? So I think we'll get that out within the next week or so, just to give people another update as we continue along this process. We're also, um, continuing to update our coronavirus webpage with all these board meetings, which have these department updates, which we all touch on. The school closures and where we're at, so we update those. Um, and it's been interesting, I was checking some of the web traffic today to that page and since we. First created the page at the end of January, we have over thirty-one thousand hits to it, which obviously that's a good sign that people find it beneficial and informational. And even though we haven't, we, our updates are less frequent now, about every thirty days or so, we're still, the last thirty days. Have a little bit over four hundred clicks to the website, so, um, we're hoping people find that useful and we'll continue to update that. Um, as long as needed. We started our, Amber and I, our PIO, uh, started our Nice Notes appreciation campaign last week and. We usually do, uh, we created a staff appreciation night at the high school for staff all across the district every year and. Obviously we can't do that this year with getting everyone to the football game and, uh, the face painting and all that sort of stuff. So we were trying to think of creative ways to do something virtually to just to share. Our tremendous appreciation for our staff and teachers who have just gone, as everyone knows, above and beyond, so we thought of this idea. Um, some, one of the principals shared with us a nice email they got from a parent. And it, to, to the executive team and it made all of us kind of light up. We're like, this is fantastic. So we kind of like, keep sending those nice emails our way. It's just so nice to hear these. Um, so then we're like, we, let's do something with these. Let's, uh, if we feel good about these, we know other people will feel good about them, so we. Went through this whole process, so we're collecting more of the, uh, nice notes from parents to teachers. And then we created a Google form when we post these, um, on our, on our Facebook and whatnot and then. So people can add to those, uh, as well. I just want to read one quick one too. Um, that you could, was just posted tonight on our Facebook page along with a couple others. And it's, uh, to Ms. Ashworth who leads our Nutrition Services Department, uh, and these are the types of notes we're getting. So it says, please thank your entire nutrition staff department on behalf of our family. The meals have been so helpful to us. When we first heard about the free meals, we declined because we were able to provide for our kids. However, now that we have been evacuated due to the fires, the meals have been an absolute necessity for our children. We were staying with my mother-in-law who was more susceptible to COVID, so we have been trying to avoid. Going to places outside like grocery stores and whatnot in the public. We also didn't even think to pack food when we evacuated. We appreciate being allowed to go to any site as well because we are now. Residing closer to Baldwin Stalker. Just wanted to say thank you again for all that you and your staff does each day. So it's just a nice way to share that with everyone and the staff. Nutrition Services has been in the heat. They've been in the smoke and they've been out there every day, so it's just, we want to share those things, so that's been great and. Amber's did a great job creating these, uh, nice infographic templates to put them in and, and make them look really nice, so that's been great. And you can check more of those out on our Facebook page. Uh, Amber also created a nice little video from our last board meeting when we honored our Arcadia Unified Teacher of the Year, Mr. Barry Lisbon, so that is out there. Our interns have been working hard, doing some articles. They did one on the student perspective of the Bobcat Fire and what they're dealing with and now they're working on. Some distance learning articles from different perspectives, from teachers to students and what kind of that dynamic has been like during all that, so that has been neat. And then our interns have created a middle school writing, uh, news writing competition, uh, for middle school kids in our district. So that's going to begin this week and we'll get that out, so that's a nice little opportunity. Our high school students are providing for. Our high school students are providing for middle school students to spread some more of those great stories throughout the district. And that is my update. Thank you, everyone.
All right. Any questions for Ryan? Guys have been busy. Thank you. All right. And then next we have our chief technology officer, Scott Bramley.
Good evening. I just have a short update tonight. I did want to share, last time I shared that most of our T I S staff are back working in the district. And tonight I can share that our entire T I S staff is now working on site. I've talked a lot about our help desk tickets and the number of tickets coming in over the first couple of months of school. I'm happy to report that it has slowed down a bit. We're still a little bit over normal, but it's allowing us to work on catching up, which is a good feeling. I wanted to share that we have now distributed fifty hotspots to students without internet. And we're hoping to receive twenty-five additional hotspots soon from the Los Angeles County Office of Education. We're excited tomorrow. We have a great opportunity to engage in a discussion with the lead person from the Google Meet development team. And so we get to share some feedback regarding the new enhancements and possible future enhancements. So we're excited about that. And we are now full swing in the middle of state and federal reporting cycle for, for this school year. So we've got a lot of work going on in that area. And since we ended up our enrollment projection board meeting last month, I just thought I'd mention that we are now fully underway on enrollment projections for next year, which will be more challenging than they've ever been. And that is my report.
All right. Thank you, Scott. Any questions? All right. I did want to add a few comments regarding a statement that Greg made on, you know, learning from the research that's going on right now with best practices going on around the country with returning to school. One of the things that I've been doing personally and encouraging my entire team to do is to reach out, take advantage of our network. So, so many people have their doctorate degree and have been in a cohort with a group of people that are now, you know, working all over the area. And there's a lot to learn from the folks that are in different counties, as I spoke earlier, that have different restrictions that have gone back. But I want to share something that has not been a real positive experience, but it's, it's a reality. And that is people get so hyper focused on, I just want to be back. I want my kid back in school. And one of the experiences that they're having is the superintendents I'm speaking with is that they, they just got settled in in the virtual environment. And when they then went back as soon as they were able to, but under restrictions of the number of students. So it's a hybrid model where they're only allowed so many students in the classroom plus allowing students to be home all day that aren't comfortable to come. So they're running these multi-track A student groups, B group, and then a C group with students that are at home. And when I asked directly this question to each of them, is teaching and learning better and enhanced than where you were, you know, the week before in a virtual environment? The answer has clearly been no. And the reason is just that they're just managing the, the chaos, the protocols, the social distancing, you know, all the discipline with people that don't want to wear a mask. And of course, they're having student cases, they're having adult cases. So then they're managing the rumor mill of, you know, one case becomes fifty case by social media within hours. It's just really been hectic and a lot to manage. And unfortunately, teaching and learning has taken a backseat to all of the managing of just the protocols. So I'm just sharing that. I would love to share the opposite, that we're seeing really good results and we're seeing, you know, schedules that are working and we're able to kind of, you know, duplicate that when the time comes, but we're not seeing that right now. So we'll continue to watch. But I think we have a benefit in L A County right now of being able to watch some of the other folks return and what's working and what's not. So we'll continue to update you with what we're learning on that as well. Thank you. That's it.
Have to remember that mute button. Okay, we are now at consent items. Could I have a motion to approve consent items A through C?
I moved to approve consent items A through C?
I'll second.
Okay, the motion was made by Mr. Eng, seconded by Ms. Yee. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Comments? Ms. Chavez, would you like to start us off?
Thank you, Madam President. So as Dr. Forsey mentioned, I just wanted to say well done and way to go to all our teachers that just finished their first virtual parent teacher conference weeks. That's a overwhelming process in the normal course. And I know some teachers even had parents showing up to their door thinking that even all that Google meets stuff meant they were still supposed to come. So I think everybody just rolled with it and kudos to them. Also, wanted to give a really brief highlight on the region twenty-three C S B A thing that I went to. Mainly, it was the report that Derek just gave on budget updates. So thank you, Derek. And also, they did touch on the pandemic-related liability issues that school districts are exposed to that the legislature really has not addressed yet. So just have that on their radar. And wanted to say thank you. As Dr. Harishu mentioned, everybody who's working on the plan to identify root causes and that significant difference in our special education populations. And then lastly, I get to do my first music club update of the year. They had their first meeting last time we were meeting, but I did get some information. One, of course, all the classes and music camp, everything's been virtual, which is, you know, a challenge for just teaching a lecture-based class, but I, I just, the arts present a whole nother layer of needed innovation. And they are mostly using smart music software so that individual players at home can hear the right soundtrack of everybody else playing. And teachers are then getting video assignments back and able to give feedback for improvement. All the groups are working on a final semester project that, you know, of course, they were hoping would be something live, but you know, looking more and more like that will also be some sort of video based thing. And then a couple of things I found really interesting is Color Guard is doing a project where the students are creating a show from scratch, music, costume, choreography, design, since they aren't actually performing. And that they are getting a lot of guest lecturers into the music classes, which maybe we don't normally have an opportunity to do. And so the Air Force Band at the Golden West has been that, has done that with our band. And then lastly, the choir at the high school, they've started a middle school program. And they have seventy-five of our middle schoolers participating. And I don't know that that would have been something as easy to do if we were in this virtual world. So kudos to all of those at the music department that are just really thinking outside the box. And that's my report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Eng.
Thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to express appreciation for our long-term things, especially like in upgrading our systems, HVAC and the lighting systems. That's, that's really taking advantage of our situation and good foresight in terms of looking at things long term. Really appreciate that. During a professional development day, I did have a chance to stop by at the Rancho P D. And part of the attraction was I heard there's gonna be an art lesson. So I really appreciated it. It was given by Tammy Morales. She took on a difficult task of, of teaching how to put together abstract art, which is a very difficult thing to teach, difficult subject. As you all know, a lot of us may look at abstract artists, really say, I don't get it. But she was able to do it. She was able to teach something that's difficult to understand. And, and, and did it in a very fun way. So I really appreciate that. I think that, that really resonated with me. And I think it really touched everyone else that participated in that area, about actually create abstract art and really get an understanding of this difficult subject. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Yee.
All right. So first of all, just as usual, a big thank you to all the teachers on all the work they're doing still as we end our first quarter. And of course, as Lee said to the elementary school teachers, I know that was a huge, huge uptake and I did hear little bits and pieces here and there, but overall, it went really well and it was pretty impressive. So kudos to all the teachers. And actually, I wanted to thank Liam Fenton for your little reports on the P D because I actually really wanted to attend some of them and I, I wasn't able to. So thank you for that because it was, I was really interested in trying to go, but unfortunately could not. And let's see. The other thing was I've, I actually will be attending their K D Council P T A meeting on Thursday, but I did reach out to to find out about their, their association meetings. Hopefully, I'll be able to attend at least one during this year. And I was able to attend First Avenue's first association meeting. And it was really just great to be able to see the enthusiasm the exec board had and the plans that they're making. I'm still amazed at how the P T As are really coming together, being really creative. I know F A's gonna be doing a virtual, virtual five K, so that should be fun for them as our fundraiser. And so I'm really looking forward to going to the other meetings and finding out what the other P T As are doing. It should be interesting. Other than that, Raymond and Brent and I have been really busy attending our classes. We, we've all started our masters in governance with C S B A. So that has been very enlightening. And I know that all three of us probably have thought this, and I've told this to David, that I feel very grateful to be in A U S D. Just hearing all the stories of all the other districts and the challenges that they have. It's, I mean, I, I'm very impressed with all the board members of those districts, just, you know, stepping up and taking time to try to help and fix their systems. But honestly, it's, I felt pretty proud being being on the A U S D board. So thank you to everybody in A U S D for just continuing to look forward, like as Derek and his team has done with the HVAC and the lighting systems and just everyone working together. I think that's really the key to our district's success. It's just that our relationships are really just really strong and the trust that we have really makes a difference. So thank you, everybody. And that concludes my report.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Yee. Mr. Chung.
Thank you, Madam President. And as always, thanks to all our staff for such great and informative updates. Wish we could go down and listen. Thank every single person, but we'll, we'll be here all night, but it is very much appreciated from everybody. So thank you. And, and Dr. Van Oostal's setting expectations, I think that, that was really good and really necessary because you know, just we're in such a times of uncertainty, it's good to have that stability and knowledge that, you know, this is what we're gonna be doing for a while. And there's a lot of kind of peace to that, to knowing that. So hopefully, we can get that news out. So people just have that understanding so they can make their plans accordingly. As, as a parent of a younger student, elementary student, I, I got to partake in my, our first virtual conference and it was really cool, actually, to have gone through that process and just to, it, it actually was basically just like a regular conference, except we were doing it via computer. Everything else seemed exactly the same. So kudos to all elementary, elementary school teachers who I'm sure worked really hard to prepare for those virtual conferences and, and, you know, great job. It was, it was perfect. Ryan and Amber loved the, the Nice Notes project. You know, same kind of thing with, with, you know, this time of uncertainty and negativity right now. It's nice to have that bit of light in the darkness. So, so thank you. Really, really cool to see that. Couple more thank yous. I got a chance to tour the high school with Principal Dillon a couple of weeks back. You know, it was actually the first time I'd been back since, you know, like twenty years ago. So it was really cool to see the changes. I'm sure a lot of you other board members have, you know, seen it more recently and probably have not noticed the, the dramatic type of changes that, that I saw. So very, very impressed. And, you know, Arcadia high school students have it really good. I must say, it is a fantastic campus and we are, we are so lucky to have all upgrades. It, it looks great. Kudos to staff for, you know, never stopping making, making things better, especially at the high school. One, one more thank you for Principal Teresa Oakland over Holly Ave. Leah already touched on the professional development that they had Dr. Gady Fuller come by, so I'm not going to get into it. She talked about it perfectly. Couldn't have said it better. But I kind of want to tie that with some of the stuff that Shirley and Dr. Forsey and I have been going through with masters in governance. You know, we learned about some districts are looking into, or I've done, an equity statement or equity resolution. And considering all the work that we've been doing already, I think, you know, it, it might be something to think about to to kind of recognize, to support, memorialize and highlight and showcase the efforts that we're, we're already doing. So obviously, can't really talk about that now or discuss it, but maybe sometime in the future. That, that's all I got, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Watt, do you, do you have comments for us?
Yeah, I'll just keep it brief. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for all the presentations today. As a student with like not a huge grasp on like structural lighting and stuff like that, it was really easy to understand for me. And everything was really clear. So I really enjoyed that. And just the presentations on COVID, the routine ones were also extremely informative and easy to follow as well. As for A S B, as you might have heard in the report, we've been keeping pretty busy just trying to create opportunities for students to still retain some semblance of normalcy during this time. So if you know any H S students, please encourage them to come to A S B's drive-through teacher treat because we've been putting a lot of effort into it and I think it'll be really fun. Thank you.
Fabulous. Dr. Van Oostal.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I also want to just thank Derek and his entire team for continuing to invest in our future. I'm going to connect that to a couple of things. The, the first one is in a healthy organization, people plan on staying. And that sounds easy, but that's not always the case in education today or in any public sector. There's a lot of dysfunction and people are quickly moving around. And when that's the case, you're not investing eight, ten years out. But when you plan on being and with an organization and you feel part of that, that organization, then you do invest that many years out. And so it's, it's directly connected to all of our work. Having a healthy organization, the trusting relationships and a place that people plan on staying and therefore have to live with the decisions that they're making long term. And that's an important piece. So thank you, Derek, to your team. And secondly, he made the point that And secondly, he made the point that the savings that we will get from the energy savings goes directly into our operating budget, our general budget, which is, which translates to resources for teaching and learning. So it is a really big deal and we'll continue to see that over the year. So thank you. And we'll want to congratulate our newly created Art Council that came out of our swag work, our small working Arcadia groups on those minimum days. It was an opportunity years ago for our K-12 art teachers, both visual performing, to get together and, and start to articulate and talk about their content and how it connects from, again, you know, TK all the way up to 12. And like many of those swag groups, those teachers have ended up driving so many district-wide programs that we now have, like restorative practices, leader in me, those types of things. And here's another one. And so they've been working now and they put together this three, five-year program out and were able to secure this grant that, that we're now matching as a district. And so I'm excited about that. And I thought Fenton was going to share it, because he's been doing a lot of work with our Performing Arts Foundation. But we're now starting to see this really interesting relationship between the newly-formed Art Council and the Performing Arts Foundation and how they share a, a common interest and support. And so I'm really excited and to see where that's going to go for us. And then also, we mentioned it, but again, Mr. Chung, Mrs. Yi, thank you for your commitment as new board members to go to the Masters in Governance classes. I, I continue to know that no one, before stepping into these positions, have any idea of the amount of work that they, that they're, that's involved. It's not just a title. There's a lot of information to consume and, and just learning how a team operates, how a board operates. I mean, obviously, you, you enter a board as an individual with your ideas and expertise and, but also, you know, you operate as a board. And what does that mean and what does that look like? So a lot of people take that for granted, but we have a tradition of that commitment and you guys are continuing to carry that torch. So thank you. I understand it's a huge commitment and a sacrifice for your families as well. So I appreciate it. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. A lot of what I had has been covered, because there's been so much good work and thank you to everyone for everything. I went to the Chamber of Commerce meeting today and there were some very interesting things out of that. First, the, the city is doing the same bond refinancing. They're going out for a couple more, or some more bond money, but refinancing as well. So they're starting the process right now. A lot of the bonds are sitting at 7% and they're planning to have them go down 2%. That'll really help. Chief Bob Guthrie is retiring at the end of the year. His actual retirement date is January 8th. So they're looking and interviewing right now for a new police chief. If you're like me, I've noticed my water costs being extremely high. Evidently, they're having to buy water, replace water into the aquifer, so it doesn't go too low. And that is the, the cost of that water that they're pumping into the ground, that is what we're paying for in our water bill. So that was interesting. The city has gotten quite a bit of money or some money from the Measure H grants for the housing, for the homeless. And that case manager that was part-time is now a full-time case manager in Arcadia. They'll be located now down near the Par 3 golf course, where they're also going to be moving in a, I don't know if you've seen these online or anywhere, they're shower facilities. It's a kind of portable trailer that becomes stationary in place. So they'll have showers, they'll also have washing machines and dryers, and the caseworker all right there to be able to be there and help the homeless. They have no clue as to when the road to Shantry will be open. There were some rock sides, they cleaned that up, but there's no timing at this point on that. They, they're looking at reopening Wilderness Park, so I think Wilderness Park will be reopened shortly. The hospitals report elective surgeries are on at Methodist Hospital. They are having a decent patient volume, though it dipped for some reason in September. But they're urging everybody, if you have a need for healthcare or an emergency, come in, it's safe to come in. They do have a separate tent outside the ER room to screen people. So anybody with COVID goes, is, or anybody who they suspect has COVID is going into the tent. So only those sick, needing emergency services without COVID go in through the main doors. They are seeing a rise in patients who are being hospitalized with COVID. They were down in single digits, they're now easily up in the 15, 17 people in the bed count who have COVID. And so they are seeing that increase. The mall has made a lot of improvements to deal with COVID, including air filtration, air handling and all that, besides being at 25% capacity. They're nowhere near that capacity, so it's a safe time to shop. And they're, they're doing a few things to try to get some people in shopping. Arboretum is continuing. They have the, their fitness programs and yoga. They're having a huge demand for after-school programs and they're booking, that's fully booked through the end of the year right now. But both them and the racetrack have had location scouts for filming and filming is starting up. And both the racetrack and the arboretum will be vote centers. So please, everyone, vote this year. And the racetrack will be open October 30th to November 3rd. But the arboretum in the Ayers Hall will be open starting October 24th through November 3rd. And I don't know if teachers will be interested to know this, but Kaiser, our police dog, is available for Zoom meetings. So if they want a police officer with the dog for a Zoom meeting, they could probably do that and work it into their curriculum. And that's it from the, the chamber. A lot of good information was shared in, in discussion. And I, I want to, I wanted to thank, when, I really found the, the Friday Board letter updates have been so helpful recently and I was so interested in, in seeing what we did for handling the COVID case that we did have in the district, the cleaning, sanitation, and also the improvements made to the air handling system. And I'm assuming that the, that Eye Wave that was installed at the district office is similar to what's being talked by Pacific West in future plans. But very interesting technology and I'm very happy to see that we're moving towards that. So keep up the good work and it was a great FBL outlining that. I think it's good for our community to be able to see that if we do have a COVID case, we do follow it up and do everything that we need to do with the contract, contact tracing, as well as sanitizing and cleaning everything, so that we can keep all of our employees and students safe. And I think that's it, unless there's anybody else who has anything. We will adjourn this meeting at exactly 9:00 PM then. Thank you all.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Have a good evening. Thank you.